All right, this is the. The Cortez City Council Work Session slash Special Meeting. Today is Tuesday, June eleventh, two thousand and twenty-four, and the time is six P M. I'd like to call this meeting to order and start with A on our agenda, interviews of with interested citizens wishing to serve on various city boards and commissions. All right, we're going to start with the Historic Preservation Board. I'd like to invite Holly Tatnall to the.
Mayor, if I could interject just one second before we sit down there. We actually have our new I T manager here this evening. We'd just like to briefly introduce the council and then we can get him on his way if that would work for the mayor.
Yes, thank you. Sorry, I forgot.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for being here tonight.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. It is with great pleasure that I introduce to you our new I T manager, Jay Rohr. Jay comes to us with twenty years of experience as an I T leader. He's worked as not only a senior service support consultant, but also a software principal engineer. He has a proven track record of analyzing complex business processes and projects, enabling continuous improvement, enhanced reporting capabilities, and optimal productivity. He is experienced in cross-departmental collaboration and is skilled in delivering an exceptional end-user experience. Aside from his work experience, Jay has served on the City Council of. He also was the liaison for the council on the Parking Authority Board, Arts Council, Chamber of Commerce, and the Pike's Peak Area Council of Governments. Jay brings a tremendous amount of professionalism and experience to our I T team, and we are all looking forward to working and collaborating with him. Welcome to the city, Jay.
Thank you. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do you want to say anything or?
Good evening, Madam Mayor and councilors. I'm really looking forward to working at the city. Already been able to jump in and figure out what's going on, on certain projects at least. And while I don't reside in your fair city, I'm just a short drive down in Durango. And it's, to me, it's a great opportunity to learn a part of I T that I don't know, and I really appreciate the opportunity.
Great. Well, thank you so much for being here and introducing yourself to council.
Certainly. You guys have a good evening.
Look forward to having you on our team.
Thank you.
All right. All right, Holly. And Holly, since you're actually appointed by the Cultural Center, we're not going to formally interview you, but we'd love to just hear a little bit about you.
Oh, you mean it's, I'm good to go? Um, I've been on the, whoa, sorry, I forget. I use a microphone and I forget. I've been on the Cultural Center Board for longer than I care to admit. And I'm pleased to represent them. You know, it is a historic building, one of the, in my opinion, one of the prettiest in all of Cortez that's still standing. And we're working on grants with the help of Linda Toll. And it's really been an honor and an eye-opener to be part of the Historic Preservation Board. Many of you know Linda Toll, and she's a force to be reckoned with in the amount of grant money she's brought in to survey the city. And I fully look at it as an opportunity to promote Cortez in a different sort of way. I think we, we don't acknowledge our history as much as we could, and we don't utilize it to make Cortez an even more inviting place to live and come play. So, whatever you have.
Is there any other questions for Holly?
I don't have a question. I just wanted to say thank you for being on the board. I know you've been the, well, I am the outgoing, I guess, council representative to the Historic Preservation Board, and you as the chair of that board for the last few years has been really great, and it's been great working with you and smooth, and I'm sure that that will continue with, with April.
As long as Linda is there, we're open. If he is not there, we're not open. I have to tell you, thank the city too very much for appointing Helen West. Both Helen and Lydia have really added. Helen was truly responsible for the coloring book idea this year, and, and I think it was phenomenal. Just to give you a heads up, we had about a hundred and sixty people participate in historic conservation activities for the, the month of May, opposed, as opposed to ten or twenty in the past few years. So, this shows lots of potential. So, it's a pleasure working with you guys or for you guys. Thanks.
Well, thank you so much, Holly, for your dedication. Appreciate it. All right, I want to invite Nina Tao for the Planning and Zoning Commission. Okay, is Ally here for the library board?
Yeah, Melanie from the library board. Melanie Rebe.
Okay. Okay, this is for the Library Advisory Board. All right. Hi, Melanie. Thank you for, for being here. So, you're running for the Library Advisory Board. We, we have just set a questions for you, and we'll just go through the line asking you, starting with Councilmember Bill Lewis.
Hi, Melanie. First question, what do you think is the role of a library in this community?
I think in any community, a library is, or can be, a beacon. It's a place that anybody should be able to go to. It should be able to be used. Our library, it has no cost to anybody to come in, so it's available for everybody, no matter what their age, their income, anything like that. So, I think that's a really good thing that it's, you know, it's there for anybody to use.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, Melanie.
Hi.
If you're selected for the position, what do you feel would be your greatest contribution to the library board?
I think my greatest contribution would be that I am like a lifelong library user. One of my earliest memories is of going to the library with my mother. I would take my grandma's books back to the library for her and get new ones. And every community I've lived in, I have used my local library. So, I think libraries are very important.
What do you see as the top two priorities for library service provision at the Cortez Public Library?
Would you repeat that, please?
A top two priorities for library services.
For library service? I don't know if this is library service, but I think without a director, we can't, I think that's the most important thing first, is to get a library director so that we can improve our services if they need improved, and to make sure the ones that are good continue.
Thank you.
If select, if selected, what are, would be your goals as a library board member?
One of the goals, I think, would be to get our Friends of the Library going again. It's, I don't know how long it's been since it was active, but it's not active right now. And I think that it, the Friends of the Library could be a big help to our library if we had an active one.
How would you raise public awareness for library services in Cortez and the surrounding community?
Well, I know that right now it's on Facebook already, because I, I see things that have been put on there about upcoming events and things like that. So, I think that's a plus and should continue. And maybe other social media as well.
All right. Those are the questions we had for you. So, thank you, Melanie, for your time. We appreciate it. How long have you served on the library board?
I don't really know. Before Eric was here, I was on the board.
Wow. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, yeah. Robert? Hi, Robert. Thanks for being.
You bet.
Uh, we've got a set of questions here for you, and so we're just going to go down the line asking you them. And we're going to start with Councilmember Dennis Sproul.
Please share your background and interests relative to city parks and recreation. Please focus on what programs, services, or.
Um, could you say that again? I didn't quite pick it up. It was, speak, say that again, some.
Sure. I'll go a little bit slower, because I talk. So, share your background and interests relative to city parks and recreation, and focus on what programs, services, or facilities you are familiar with?
Sure. Well, my background has been in education and the Parks and Rec aspect. Years and years ago, when I was younger, I did manage swimming pools in a city in Montana. So, I know the challenges of it. And I, I just think that our Parks and Rec is phenomenal for our area, and I believe that it's really important that we keep them up and that the people of the city know that, especially if you want to try to draw businesses here, or even employees that come and interview for jobs. So, I think just being on the advisory board and trying to make sure that we maintain and improve our facilities is very important. I know we use tax dollars, and some people say, well, I don't want my tax dollars to go into that, but people get direct and indirect benefits from our Parks and Rec. So, I just want to make sure we continue it.
All right, Robert. What are the greatest strengths of the Cortez Parks and Recreation System?
Well, I think I just kind of touched on it on the various aspects of things. I mean, I know it costs money to support the golf course, and I know that the pool probably loses money too. But the pocket parks we have, just the dedication that we had last week for a couple of them, I did drive by, and it's good seeing the playground equipment there. And I was on city council when we got a GOCO grant and put in the playground equipment at the park across the street. So, it's just an important aspect of our community, because when people come here, they want to do recreation, and that's our drawing card. We know teacher salaries aren't all that high, and we got to have something to, to draw people and businesses to our area.
What are the challenges you see that you either desire to see improved or challenges you see for the park system?
Well, I've been listening to some of the public address to the council on our lifeguard challenges. And I know they've, they also showed up at a Parks and Rec Advisory Board meeting, but that would be one of the, the things that I know recruiting people. And I did attend the last Parks and Rec Advisory Meeting, and one gentleman there was going to talk to the Boy Scouts about their life savings and stuff. And so, I know as board members, I've served on previous different boards for like Pinion Project and that sort of stuff. And board members should just be there to set policy, not necessarily go off and do things on their own. But I was thinking of the aspect of working with the schools. You know, they don't go to school on Friday, and if you could pull the right things together. Fortunately, I still know some people in administrations, but we got three high schools around the area that kids don't go to school on Friday. So, if you could somehow coordinate things with the counseling office and the administration, you could get a P E credit, and we would start life skills or water safety skills class where they would get P E credit for it. And maybe you would only get ten or twelve kids that might want to do it for a, you know, a certain number of hours, two or three on a Friday. But if they could get credit, if the city could find a way to pay the, say, the P E teacher, or I was a career in tech ed director out in Arizona for three years, and we had fire safety, and they've got a class up here. But somehow, pull all that together, and if you could get ten or twelve each semester, you might get two or three grads out of each semester. And, you know, I know the city's budget is tight, but the Lor Foundation, the L O R Foundation is big on community grants, and this would definitely help the community out. If you really pulled in the pieces of the puzzle, you could even have them get dual credit and get P C C credit as an elective also. So, it'd take a lot to pull together. But I also know that if it wasn't okay for an advisory board member to, to try to pull it together, that I, I still do know some people, and I also know that they're having summer weight training program that they, the guy does weights. And it's not just for athletes. So, to try to pull something off by fall might be sort of tough, but you could certainly go up there recruiting and see who, what people might want to do aquatic safety. Maybe they don't want to be lifeguards, but you might be able to draw from the pool there. So, I don't know if that answers your question about what I might think we could improve upon or whatever, but.
Thank you, Robert. Have you been engaged in other community-based organizations? If so, please share your experience.
Uh, yes, I used to serve on Pinion Project Advisory Board years ago. I actually was on the P C C board out there when they were trying to go to S triple C. But I was working at the tribe in the Education Department at the time as the director, so that's what pulled me in there. I've been at Fort Lewis on their Native American Studies Advisory Board. But again, it's because I was Director of Education at the Umon U tribe. And then just being a school superintendent, I had to deal with boards, and I know how boards should function as a group setting policies and, and not go off on their own and micromanage, so to speak.
Thanks. Thank you. What is or would be your greatest contribution as a member of the Parks and Recreation Forestry Advisory Board?
Well, I think just having been on previous boards, knowing boards, and if I had permission, I'd probably try to get lifeguard scenario that I said earlier, try to pull that together. And then just, I, I, I see what their, their goals are, because it was on their last agenda, and try to help facilitate pulling together some of those goals, seeing what the strategic plan might be and that sort of thing.
Hi, Robert. What's your interest in serving as a Parks and Recreation Forestry Advisory member? And what knowledge, skills, and abilities do you have that will help fulfill the board's mission?
Well, I think part of my interest was the fact that, and some of you weren't even on city council yet, I think before the swim team made all of their, some of their public comments. I'm not real sure. But I, I'd rather be a part of the solution than a part of the problem. And so, if I can come up with some advising of things that I've been through through the course of time, then I, I look at them as opportunities, not problems, but an opportunity that you have to do something a little bit different that might get some things accomplished.
Okay. That's all we have for you. Thank you, Robert, for your time. We appreciate it.
Yeah, I know we're only supposed to take about five minutes, but sorry. Thank you. And I don't know if Tina's going to show up for the P and Z.
Right, folks might be running late. But if you want to.
Oh, no, she might.
Grab Donna.
She might be here. Thank you for your time.
Thanks. Thanks. Uh, we can do- we can jump to Rich. Rich.
Good- good evening.
Um, so we've just got a set of questions for you and we're gonna go down the line and ask them.
Okay. Yeah, you guys had me worried there. It was a long session, so-
Depends on how long you talk.
Yeah.
Well, hi, Richard. Uh, please share your background and experience relative to the city parks and recreation and please focus on what programs, services, and facilities you're familiar with.
Well, I'm familiar with most of the facilities. Um, as most of you probably know, I just- just over a year ago, I retired from the city. Worked for the city for eight years as the Water Superintendent. Uh, in that position, of course, I traveled all around the city. I got intimate knowledge of, uh, you know, basically all phases of the- of the operation of the city. Um, in a- in a previous life, I've been a Public Works Director for numerous small towns and in those small towns, my- part of my job was actually, uh, Parks Director. I- we maintained, uh, parks. Uh, you know, I managed several Tree City- all the cities that I worked for were Tree City USA tree, uh, cities and, uh, and managed those. Um, I've owned my own lands- uh, landscape irrigation company for a number of years in my younger years. Uh, so I have a lot of landscape turf type experience. I'm a little bit limited when it comes to, uh, uh, recreation, you know, specifically, other than participating. But, um, I don't- I don't feel that there's any issues learning. Matter of fact, I look forward to learning.
Thank you.
Hi, Rich.
Hello.
Can you tell us what the greatest strengths of the Cortez Park and Recreation System are?
Uh, I think the greatest strength is the- the parks themselves. I mean, we have phenomenal parks here. And, uh, you know, they are, you know, they're- they're well-maintained, they're, uh, I mean, they're a truly a huge asset for the city. And I can't tell you, I, you know, I lived in Durango for a long time and we would pass through Cortez, you know, going places, you know, and I never, you know, all I ever saw was Main Street and, uh, I never knew there were these kind of parks here. And, uh, we have- we have great parks and so that's our- really our, I mean, we're- we're truly lucky.
Uh, what are the challenges that you desire to see improved?
Well, I know we, uh, you know, certainly, you know, there's- there are challenges with water, as you know, I- I have a keen interest in that. Uh, so certainly, uh, efficiency in the sprinkler systems, you know, maybe getting rid of some of the turf that's unneeded. Uh, and- and I know just from, you know, watching the meetings that, uh, you know, we have- we have issues with, uh, with staffing. Um, and, uh, it's, you know, maybe we can put our heads together. I'm sure they've already been doing it, but trying to be, uh, creative in- in completing our staffing. Uh, I think those are a couple of the key things.
Great.
Uh, have you been- have you been engaged with, uh, any other community-based organizations and please share your experience with us about that?
Well, I- well, yes, right now, I'm actually on the Cortez Sanitation District Board. So, currently, um, other than that, I don't have a- a whole lot, other than being part of working for numerous cities or towns, these were all towns. Uh, smaller, um, but I- but in those roles, uh, I- I had to interact with all of the Boards that were, you know, whether it would be Historic Preservation or, uh, or Arts or Parks and Rec, uh, I- I, um, I dealt with them on- on a regular basis and attended most of the meetings, so.
Hey, Rich, what would be your greatest contribution as a Parks and Recreation Forestry Advisory Board Member?
Um, I think, uh, probably, you know, my experience. Um, also, I'm a- I'm a pretty good listener, so I think that's important that we, uh, try to, uh, try to unders- listen and understand what, uh, what the- what our- our citizens want or desire anyway. Uh, so I think those are a couple of things.
You've pretty well covered what I'm about to ask, but I'll do it again. Uh, what is your interest in serving as a Board Member? What knowledge, skills, and abilities do you have that will help this Board fulfill its mission?
Uh, good question. I thought I was gonna lead off with that, so. No, uh, I, uh, you know, I'm re- I'm kind of- I'm semi-retired right now. I've been doing, as you know, I- I came and presented, we did the turf replacement program, so I've been, you know, I've been active in the city. Uh, I'd- I'd like to stay active, uh, in the city. I have, you know, a- a lot of interest in that. I have some broad experience that I think could be, uh, could be beneficial. But like I say, I'm not, uh, I'm not set in my ways or anything like that. I- I- I tend to think that I'm a good listener. And, uh, so, uh, other than that, I've kinda mentioned, you know, I mean, I owned my own landscape company, I've been a Public Works Director and- and, uh, through that, I- I understand, uh, city government and how things run and how things need to run. I understand budgets and- and all those things, so, I mean, I think I'm- I'm fairly well-rounded and I think, uh, you know, mostly, I have the desire and the- and the want to do that and I have the energy and the time, so.
Before we let him go, can I ask one question off of the chart? If you went by a park in the city of Cortez and it didn't look good, you know, it was dark, it was brown, it was not maintained, what would you do?
As a citizen?
As a Board Member or as a-
Oh, as a- as a Board Member, then, you know, that would be something that we- we would discuss, definitely. I mean, I am- I am- I like- I would like to pride myself as- as being proactive and, um, and so I would want to a- at least talk about, I mean, there- there may be real reasons for things like that that- that I'd like to find out about and then try to discuss what could be done.
Great, thank you, Rich.
Alright, thank you. Have a good night.
Okay, this is, um, Ally, one from the library.
Okay. Well, thank you for joining us tonight, Ally, and, um, yeah, make sure the microphone is green, so-
Fun, okay.
We've got, uh, just a set of questions for you that we're gonna ask, so we'll start with Councilmember Spruill and just go down the line, alright? But thank you for your interest.
Yeah, thank you.
What do you think is the role of the library, uh, in this community?
Well, I would love it to be a place where people can come together, where there's lots of resources and programming for people to meet each other and, um, be in community and also just, you know, have access to public services that are useful to them. I think that's one of the reasons why I'm interested in the Board is I really want- I use the library a lot, but I think there's a lot of people who don't and I want it to just be like more people inside of the library, more people thinking of the library, like, "Oh, I need something. I think maybe I could go to the library and get help with that." Um, that's the kind of space I dream of.
Welcome, Ally. If selected, what would be your greatest contribution to the Library Board?
Um, I think I'm just really excited about it and like enthusiastic and I have, um, I have ideas, but also like, I did the, um, Library Hiring Board for the Library Director that didn't end up working out, but, um, I found that to be a really wonderful process and hearing what ideas some of these directors had and just seeing like what potential there really is for this library just got me even more excited. So, I think, um, just having a fresh perspective, having ideas, a vision of what I wanna see for the library would be my greatest contribution.
Great, thank you.
What do you see as the top two priorities for library service provision at the Cortez Public Library?
Top two priorities for library service provision?
For- for library service provision.
I think programming, I think, is huge. I think we're- we're a pretty big population in Cortez and I know a lot of people in the community, including myself sometimes, go to other towns to use their programming in their libraries, which is awesome. Like, I love that we all, you know, intermix, but I think it would be really cool if Cortez, since we serve, actually a bigger population, um, had a lot of their programming as well. And I think the other would be, I- I think to provide a space for all ages. I think, right now, there's things for young kids, which I have a young kid, so I love that. That works for me. But at some point, you know, she's gonna grow up and I don't feel like there's maybe as much for teens or, um, even people my age, um, and then there's kind of, I know a lot of the older folks in our community use the library a lot. So just more for all ages, to feel welcome there, to feel like there's resources that they're interested in, um, to just wanna hang out and like read there too. That type of thing, yeah.
Uh, if selected, what would be your goal as a Library Board Member?
My goal would be to do whatever I can to help, um, this library become, again, what I sort of have been saying, what I think it can be. I've never been on a Library Board, so I don't know, you know, what that exactly looks like at the moment, but I think just, you know, supporting the people who work there every single day, um, in whatever way I can to help their visions come to life.
Thanks.
Hi, Ally.
Hi.
So how would you raise public awareness for library services in Cortez and the surround-
Well, I think this is a huge thing and this is what I learned too when I was on the hiring committee, is that outreach is a huge thing for libraries that lots of people are doing and I think that's not something we're really doing. Um, like the Friends of the Library Program, I think, could be a really great way to do that. Um, also just, I would talk about it all the time. I mean, I do talk about the- I use the library a lot, so I do talk about it, um, in my own community with my own people, um, but to have there be more of a presence of the library at public events that- around our town, I think that would be, um, really amazing and, you know, in the same way that I hear about Delores Library Programs and I go utilize those, I think that that can extend to our county, um, so people wanna come to the Cortez Library and use it.
Thanks. Those are all the questions we had. We appreciate your time.
Okay, thank you so much. I appreciate it too.
Hi, Roxanne. Thanks for joining us tonight.
Oh, sure.
We've got a- a set of questions that we're gonna ask you for this interview process and we're gonna start with, um, Councilmember Bill Lewis and just go down the line.
Okay. It better be good.
Hi, Roxanne, welcome. What do you think is the role of a library in this community?
Oh, I think it's a vital role. It's a- a place that anybody can go to, anybody can find anything they want. It's, you know, a staple for communities, I think.
Thank you.
Hi.
So if selected, what is or would be your greatest contribution to the Library Board?
Hmm, well, time, experience, maybe, um. I, you know, I've done some tutoring with kids when we- the library was doing that procedure, I, you know, and I'm willing to work.
What do you see as, uh, the top two priorities for library service provision, um, at the library?
Probably, um, access to computer and all of that technology and two of them, huh? And just a- a great place to bring children. You know, I think reading is just one of those things that gets- sometimes gets left behind and the library programs to help kids do that is vital, I think.
Yeah, thank you.
If selected, what would be your goals as a Library Board Member?
Well, I think I would like to, really, my biggest goal would be to have a new library building. And to follow the direction of a new vital library director and build up, you know, more support in the community for the library.
How would you raise public awareness for library services in Cortez and the surrounding community?
Well, I think there are more publicity, I think. A lot of, um, I know they do some Facebook advertising, but and I think the programs, the reading programs, any programs they do brings, um, you know, visibility to the li- library, which I think helps. Any kind of event.
Alright, that's the- the questions we had for you and so, um, I realize I've been- haven't been telling others, but we'll be making a- appointing people at the next meeting on, uh, June twenty-fifth.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks. Choose whichever one. Thanks for- for joining us- joining us, Damian. So we, uh, we've got just a set of questions we're gonna run through with you and, um, we're gonna start with Councilmember, uh, Dennis Spruill down there and just go down the line.
Okay.
Hi, Victor.
Hey.
What do you think is the role of a library? Uh, what do you think the role is, uh, of a library in this community?
Uh, I think it's a pretty important role. It helps with the education. It also helps with community involvement. I'd say that it probably also works a lot with, um, I don't know how to say this, workforce improvement, um, just a place for somebody to go and hone up on some skills.
Alright, if selected, what would be your greatest contribution to the Library Board?
Uh, one of probably two things. Uh, one, I'm pretty personable, uh, and- and friendly. Uh, and the other thing is, um, if it comes to like fundraising or some sort of making, uh, I'm pretty good at that. Someone once told me that I could sell chocolate to a diabetic, so that's cool.
What do you see as the top two priorities for library service at the Cortez Public Library?
Um, I think, obviously, the top service would be, um, book, having the availability to have books um, that anybody from any age can get. Uh, and then I think another service is just, again, that community relations, being able to, uh, communicate with people of Cortez or the area, um, on events happening, on things that are going on here, things that the people can get involved in.
Uh, if- if selected, what were your- Uh, if, if selected, what would your goals as a library board member be?
That's a tricky question, because, uh, I don't know where they are, or, um, really what they need. I, my goal would be to just fit in and help out where it's needed to be helped.
Thank you.
Hi Damian.
Hi.
How would you raise public awareness for library services in Cortez and the surrounding community?
You know, I would have said like, more involvement in social media. But I don't know if you can do that now with the, the new rules pertaining to Facebook and stuff. I think that it has to be through the city now, doesn't it? Yeah.
All right, that's what we had for you. So we'll be making a decision for, um, the appointments of the library board at our next meeting on the 25th.
Cool, thank you guys.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, great. Hey, and, uh, I realize I haven't been, I, I forgot to let everyone know when we'd be making a decision. Will someone follow up with them?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, I think so. Thank you. Hi.
Hi.
Hi Nina, thanks for joining us tonight, um, and your interest in the Planning and Zoning Commission. So we've got just a set of interview questions that we're going to, uh, go through with you. Who did we start with last? Was it Dennis? Okay, so I think we're going to start with Councilmember Bill Lewis here and then just go down the line.
All right.
Please explain your interest in serving as a member of the Cortez Planning Commission.
Yeah, um, I, my experience in commercial and, and I've, excuse me, let me backtrack. Um, I have experience in commercial lending and some of that experience, uh, involves com- commercial construction, um, expansion of a existing building. And I feel that I can bring that as an asset to the planning and zoning. So, uh, that's one of the reasons why I applied.
Thank you.
Hi Nina.
Hi.
What do you consider the chief function of the Planning and Zoning Commission?
To maintain and sustain, uh, this beautiful county. And to also see through updates, uh, such as, uh, building updates, road constructions, um, the beautifying the, um, county, the city here. I keep saying county because I, I see, you know, our beautiful Cortez as the face of Monizuma County. So, excuse me. But, um, yes, I believe that planning and zoning has the power and the authority to sustain and grow our town and to maintain its beauty.
Thank you. Uh, what do you think is the largest planning issue the city is currently facing?
Um, probably, probably the, I guess you could say the updates on buildings. I feel that, um, there are some buildings that need some additional, um, attention. Um, and as far as I do see some concerns for the zonings, um, there are residential homes and commercial buildings that are aligned in very close proximity. Um, you're talking about the values of residential homes, um, seeing the impact of that as well.
Thanks.
What key contributions and experience will you bring to the Planning and Zoning Commission?
Having my experience again, um, and also just, I have a bachelor's degree in business administration, being able to use that, um, to help the planning and zoning with organizations, with, um, I feel like I have a gift in administration. So taking leadership and making things, seeing things through, uh, is what I feel like I could bring to the table.
Okay Nina, this is a two-part question, so I'll ask you the first part first. Have you made yourself aware of the time commitment involved in serving on the Planning and Zoning Commission?
Yes, I do believe the planning and zoning meet once a month. And I can commit to additional time if need be.
Great. And you kind of alluded to the second part, which is would you be available to attend the monthly meetings and special work sessions? And I think you just said yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
As long as it's after hours, I would say.
All right, that's what we had for you. So we'll be making a decision, um, at our next meeting on the 25th.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you guys so much for your time. Have a good night.
All right, great. Uh, thank you for joining us. Uh, we've just got a set of interview questions for you that we're going to go down the line for, through. So we'll start with, uh, Dennis Spruill over here.
Okay.
Councilmember.
Hi Dennis.
Hi.
I love your name. Please share your background and interests relative to city parks and recreation. And please focus on what programs, services, or facilities you are familiar with. Did you get all that?
Uh, mo- most of it, I think, yeah. Well, I'm a real fan of recreational opportunities for people in any city. And when my wife and I started looking to move down in the southwest part of the state, we were really impressed with the facilities and the programs that you have here in Cortez, Colorado. So, five years ago, we bought a house, spent a year redoing it. We've been here a little over three years now, so. Just, uh, want to try to participate a little bit. Did I answer any of your questions?
You know, you can answer it any way you want to in that way.
Now, my experience in Park and Rec was in, two thousand three through two thousand five in the city of Manitou Springs, Colorado. And in two thousand five, we received, uh, an award from GOCO for the development of the Mana Zoo Park in the center of Manitou Springs. So I was very proud of that.
Welcome. What are the greatest strengths of the Cortez Parks and Recreation System?
Well, there's so many opportunities. It's kind of hard to pick one. We spent a lot of time at Hawkins. We spent a lot of time at the Recreation Center, which is fantastic. Uh, I spent a lot of time on the golf course. And I drove by the two pocket course, uh, pocket parks that you guys re, what was it? Reopened or something, uh, this week. And that's great work. Great work. Impressed with it.
What are the challenges you see for the, for the Parks and Recreation System in Cortez?
Well, I'm sure budget's always, always a challenge for all forms of government. Uh, if I'd had a, uh, my, my question is, is do they follow up on the GOCO opportunities for funding? If they haven't, I think I would suggest that if, if I get on the board.
Um, have you been engaged in other community-based organizations?
No.
Yeah, because you're new, new to the area.
This is, yeah, we're, it took us a while to settle in. Now we're ready to start getting involved.
How about anywhere you've lived before?
Uh, for, for, after we left Manitou Springs, we moved up to Denver for a few years. And, uh, we weren't too involved up there. And then we came down here. Denver's an awful big city. It's hard to, hard to break into there.
Thank you.
So what is or what would be your greatest contribution as a member of the Parks and Recreation Forestry Advisory Board?
Wow, I have experience in budgeting. Uh, worked at Connor School, deaf and blind, in accounting. The assistant, uh, controller at Pike's Peak Community College. And then I taught at Pike's Peak Community College for twenty-two years and then retired. So, it's got to be something in there that might be beneficial.
Okay Dennis, uh, what is your interest in serving as a Parks and Recreation Forestry Advisory Board Member? And what knowledge, skills, and abilities do you have that will help fulfill the board, uh, reach its mission?
Uh, other than my personal experiences, uh, in, uh, education and, and business, you know, I just really want to see the parks supported, and they are. I mean, just look out the window. You can see all the activity in the park tonight.
Thank you.
All right, that's the set of questions we've got for you. And then we're, we're going to be making a decision and appoint board members at our next meeting on June 25th.
Okay, great. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, sir. Hi Steve, uh, thanks for your interest in the, uh, Parks and Rec Board. We've just got a set of interview questions for you. And so we're going to start with Councilmember Bill Lewis here.
Okay, thanks for having me.
Hi Steve. Uh, please share your background and interests relative to the city parks and recreation. And please focus on what program, services, or facilities that you're familiar with.
So, I've only lived here for three years, but I've been passing through this area for about forty years. My parents live up valley and have land up there. And so, passing through the region, uh, long road trips from Texas, if, I don't know if you have my application in front of you or not, but we came from Austin, Texas. Lots of miles, and if anyone travels with kids and dogs, uh, you know, you have to stop at a lot of places. And, uh, city parks are often the choice. So it, uh, came to my attention that that's, if not the lasting impression, it's, uh, one of the first impressions of what you see when you pass through an area. And, uh, it's important to me to have wild spaces and public parks and have them be nice and well-kept for our residents as well as our travelers, excuse me. But, uh, my background, uh, again, I worked at the University of Texas for thirty-five years in different capacities and facilities and operations, so. It's a secondary education. It's a state school. There's state government involved. I understand the mechanisms of state government, city government. Lived in Austin for a long time, participated in some of the things with city council there as well. So, um, I'm an outdoors person. I like to spend almost all of my day outside somehow or another. And I'm retired, so I have the time and the opportunity to provide some input.
Thank you.
Hi Steve.
Hi.
Can you tell them us what the greatest strengths of the Cortez Parks and Recreation System are?
The greatest strengths? Well, the size, I would say, the acreage, right? We have, uh, that going for us here. Park at DeVita right across the street here. We have summer events, uh, the Hot Air Balloon Festivals, Fourth of July. But, you know, I think the expanse of our area lends itself to perhaps even more park properties. And I'm not sure what the Parks and Rec Division has under its umbrella, but our nature preserve that's just south. Uh, ridden bikes through there. But, you know, Denny Park right on one sixty, it's again, it's, it's people passing through. There's a dog park. There's a lake. There's many opportunities, uh, and of course irrigation's part of that, right? We have water to make things green, so keep our wildlife and other different species happy.
What are some challenges that you've, um, want to see improved?
Well, truthfully, I don't know how we stand with, uh, budget and staffing, but those are obvious things that come to mind. You have to have people to help. You have to have money to pay for things. So, I'm guessing that's probably a, a little bit of a struggle, as most things are these days. But convincing people to go outside and be part of the outdoor community can be a struggle. Sometimes folks just get stuck in their ways and don't. But just driving over here today, I mean, the park's full of youth sports activities. And that's a, that's a major lynchpin to start the process with kids. So, I don't know what, uh, challenges other than lack of rainfall and, you know, maintenance, staffing and budget.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, have you been engaged with other community-based organizations, either here or anywhere else you've lived?
Well, I'm a member, so yes, uh, currently, I'm a member of the Monizuma County Search and Rescue Team. I'm a member of SWICA, the Southwest Colorado Cycling Association. We do trail work every Tuesday. I, I skipped tonight, so I could be here in front of you. But, uh, I was on the Board of Directors for, uh, an event in Austin, Texas. It was called Eeyore's Birthday, so, uh, Eeyore the Donkey from Winnie the Pooh. And so, we decided to have a birthday party for Eeyore, and it was in the city park. And some of the residents were perhaps not as happy that the event continued to happen for forty-plus years. It's still going on now, but we were able to meet with the local residents and find out what they were concerned about. It was mostly parking and access and emergency vehicles and all that kind of stuff. And figure out a way to keep that event going and actually got grandfathered through city council to keep that Eeyore's Birthday Party, which is a nonprofit, five oh one C three group, and, uh, be able to raise money for local charities.
What would be your greatest contribution to, as a Parks and Recreation Forestry Advisory Board Member?
Well, I've worked under a lot of high-stress, high-dollar, important situations through my career at the University of Texas. And I feel like I kind of play both sides of a friendly person, but also somebody who maybe only speaks when I feel like I've got something really important to say. And I can digest information and come up with ideas that I feel like are worthy of listening to.
What is your interest in serving as a Parks and Recreation Forest Advisory Board Member? And what knowledge, skills, and abilities do you have that will help the board fulfill its mission?
Again, I love being outside. I think it's very important. Again, I love being outside. I think it's very important for parks and forestry. I mean, there's a safety aspect also, right? We've got, if there's a lot of trees in our parks that need tending to, we need to plant more trees. But um, so I do have a safety background as well, uh, through my career in natural sciences, mostly in engineering at the University of Texas. So I feel like I can bring, you know, some fresh eyes to the group. And I don't have a doubt that I can contribute in many different ways. Uh, I've got a lot of different experiences through my life, not just with my job, but outdoors. I can run machinery. I know a lot of different things about taking care of plants and trees and grasses. But before college, I've worked in uh, I worked for a, a, just one guy. And we had a three-man team, but he was an organic landscaper. And we did a lot of different fun stuff back in Texas. Even, you know, planting buckwheat in somebody's front yard because it fixes nitrogen, right? So, I got a, a pretty wide range of experiences in my life. I feel like I can contribute.
Great, thank you. That's the questions we had for you tonight. Um, and we'll just be making a decision at our next meeting on the twenty-fifth for appointments.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for your time. Alright, uh, hi Melissa. Thanks for joining us tonight and your interest in the Parks and Recreation Board. So we've just got a set of interview questions we're gonna ask you. And we're, uh, we're gonna start with Councilmember Dennis Sproul and just run down the line with the questions.
Great.
Hi Melissa. Uh, please share your background and interests relative to city parks and recreation. Please focus on what programs, services, and facilities you are familiar with.
So, I am familiar with the rec building, uh, the rec building. Um, we go there. Our family goes there every week, two, three times a week. And um, I am familiar with all the parks in the city, a lot of the trail systems and things like that, so.
Melissa, what are the greatest strengths of the Cortez Parks and Recreation System?
The greatest strengths of the system? So I find that um, the open space, the outdoor um, space that we have is I find that that, that is probably the biggest strength. I find that the building is beautiful, well-maintained. I, I think that's a good strength. I find that the membership is doable for most families here in Cortez. Um, so I, I love going there. My family loves going there. And we uh, we would love to be a, a part of helping continue to make things great.
What are the challenges that you desire, desire to see improved with the, with Parks and Recreation System?
So I've given that a lot of thought. And the amount of time that the pools are down, I think could be, could be addressed. And I think um, some of the nighttime activities with some of the um homeless folks could be addressed. Um, I find that the park is beautiful. Um, seven AM, you see a lot of debris and things left behind. And it's not so pretty at seven AM. But uh, there are some, there are some things that could be addressed, definitely.
Um, have you been engaged in other community-based organizations throughout your life?
Oh yes, oh yes. Um, volunteering is a, is central to my core belief system. I have volunteered in every community I've ever lived in, which has been two. Um, I've started several programs, which are still going to this day. My husband and I really relocated here for our jobs. And we have found that we absolutely love the area. And um, so volunteering is a, is a big thing for me. My husband currently is with Search and Rescue. And so, it kinda reignited that desire and want to get out and start volunteering again. And I've done a lot of um, I've done, I've done a lot of food banks and, and, and things of that nature. And that's very, very important, but I wanted to kinda focus on something that I'm more interested in. Um, so that's what led me here.
Thank you.
What is or what would be your greatest contribution?
Can you ask that again?
So what would be your greatest contribution as a member of the board?
So, um, I think fresh eyes. Um, I'm not from here, but this has become home. And I've been here a few years now. Uh, I think a fresh set of eyes. I, we, you know, there's ideas you can take from maybe other communities that might work well with yours, that, you know, have been proven. Um, and it might work well in this community here. So, a fresh set of eyes and I think the, the desire just to help, just to, just to wanna help and, and improve things that are already in place respectfully and um, you know, responsibly.
Okay Melissa, uh, what's your interest in serving as a Parks and Recreation Forestry Advisory Board Member? And what knowledge, skills, and abilities do you have that will help the board fulfill its mission?
Sure. So, I have read the mission statement. Um, I have been a lifelong physical fitness instructor. Of course, I'm older now, but um, so I've always been in gyms and I've always been around uh sports. I've raised all six kids in sports and, and, and in the outdoors. And I just think that um, I think the, the eagerness to help. I think the um dependability to always be there when called. And I think more so than anything, serving in the community in which you live. I think that is a, that's a driver for um positive outcomes, so.
Thank you.
Well, thank you so much for being here tonight. We're um, gonna be making a decision and appointing folks to the, the board at our next meeting on uh June twenty-fifth.
Great. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you Melissa. Great.
Hi.
Alright, uh, thank you, uh, Nix, for joining us tonight. If you wanna just tell us a little bit about yourself and why you're interested in the Arts Board?
Well, I'm Nix Pullen and I'm fifteen years old. And I'm going to be a rising junior at the local high school. And I've been interested in the arts and things like music and theater and drama since I was very young. I've been involved in the theater department with Mr. Sandner up at the high school since I was in the fifth grade, I believe. I actually just got back from working with Ms. Sitten at the choir. We're having a performance at the hearing clinic. And I've always had a strong love for the arts and everything music. And I wanna share that with this town, especially from a youth perspective, and bring in student musicians and artists so they can share what they love.
Great. Well, thank you so much for your, your interest in the board. We, we need youth representation, so. Do you guys have any questions for Nix or?
Can you sing?
I like to think so.
Love your energy. Love your energy. Nice.
So what's your favorite form of expression?
It's hard to pick. I'd probably have to say, and it kinda veers off from music. I really like performing, performing monologues and things of the like. I went with our theater department to Thesscon up in Denver. And I actually was very highly acclaimed for it and got stunning reviews from the judges. I did a Shakespearean performance. That was a lot of fun.
Wow. That's great. Well, thank you so much for joining the Arts Board. We really appreciate having you on there, so. Sweet, alright. And thanks for coming tonight to introduce yourself to us.
Oh yeah. Nice.
Alright. I know, yeah. Not shy at all. Alright, so, okay. So we've gone through all of our candidates that came tonight. So we'll move on, on our agenda. Alright, we're gonna move on to be on our agenda, General Counsel Discussion. Does any council members have a topic they'd like to bring up?
Yeah, I had a topic I'd like to bring up. Um, the governor recently signed House Bill twenty-four eleven seventy-five. And that is concerning a local, local government right of first refusal or offer for purchase qual- to purchase qualifying multifamily property for the purpose of providing long-term affordable housing or mixed income development. Couple of issues I wanted to raise with that are, one, I think that there is an issue about that being a taking of property rights. And also that it very possibly could provide a chilling effect on developers who we are hoping to develop, to develop housing in our community. There is in the law, there is the opportunity for us to um, to opt out or waive both of those rights. And, and I was just gonna suggest that we, we do that and ask the staff to, to develop something to do that. It's, it's House Bill twenty-four eleven seventy-five. Eleven seventy-five.
Yeah, I would definitely, it definitely seems um, something that staff should look, or I guess, present to us about the impact and what it would mean to not opt out or end opt-out.
So, uh, what I would suggest counsel is um, now that you have the information, you can look it up. We are happy to send you a little more information about that, or at least send the bill to you, uh, so you can consider it. I think there's some uh valid points there, but my opinion doesn't matter. What matters here is the opinion of counsel. So I think probably the best thing to do is get you all educated up on the matter. Um, I, I think uh, perhaps next meeting, what we do is uh, we'll have the city attorney and/or I do a presentation in the actual council meeting for you all on what the impacts are. You know, what, what outcomes we could expect, if any. And uh, from there, uh, if it be the will of counsel, you could uh direct us in the actual council meeting, which is more appropriate, to uh come back with a resolution to address that in the Cortez way. Is that agreeable?
Yeah, thank you. Alright, any other council members?
Um, Madam Mayor, I just uh, we'll probably bring this up again in my uh committee report. But on um Friday of last week, we had the dedication for the um new playground equipment at the city um Pocket Parks on the south side. And um, Councilmember Lewis and uh Councilmember Dobry, myself, and of course you were there. And, but I, I really wanted to just say a big thank you to Creighton and his staff and Kelly Codner. Really a great event. Um, I think what I was most impressed with is the fact that there were um lots of kids that live in the neighborhood. And it was really fun for me to be able to catch up with some students of mine that I hadn't seen for years. And I just wanted to share a really quick anecdote. Um, there's a, a boy who I would guess is probably two years old. And his mother related to me that when they drive by the Parket on Mark- the Pocket Park on Market Street, that he always points out the window and he says, "That's my park." So I just thought it was a really cool event. And it really, I think, is impactful for the south side of town, so. So thank you to Creighton and his staff and everyone else. It was really great. Uh, and then I just also wanted to mention, and, and you know this, but you and I went to the um Mobile Fallen Warrior um display that was at the uh police station on Sunday. And uh, it was really well-attended. And I think it was really a nice way to honor Officer Moran and all the other officers. It was really quite the moving experience to see one side of the, the wall have um officers uh who lost their lives in twenty twenty-two and the entire other side, um, including Officer Moran who lost their lives in twenty twenty-three. So, um, it's a, it was really a, a, a great thing to attend. And it, I think, meant a lot to his family to be there.
Thank you, Matt. Any other? Alright, well then, uh, we'll go ahead and join the work session and start a regular meeting at seven thirty PM.